Call to order the regular boarded meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Shasta County, for Tuesday, August 14th, 2012. We will start with the invocation by Sister Maura Power of Our Lady of Mercy Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Haas. Sister Power?
As we come together here this morning, let us pause in silence. And let us give thanks and praise to God, who is so rich in mercy, and has favored us here in Shasta County in so many wonderful ways. I have a short reading from Margaret Wheatley. Some of you may be familiar with her writing. She's done a lot of leadership and creative. So she says, "We already know how to create a healthy, life-affirming future for all peoples. But we now have a different problem: developing the will to act once we know what to do. The gap between knowing and doing is only bridged by the human heart. If we are willing to open our hearts to what's really going on, we will find the energy to become active again, and we will find the will and the courage to do something." And this is true not only in our individual lives, in our communities, and in our organizations, but also in our nation-states. And that is how we can restore hope to the future. The future comes from where we are now. And so let us recall the words of the prophet, "All that the Lord asks of us is to walk justly, to love tenderly, and to walk humbly with our God." And oh, so, O God, may the long-lasting effects of your blessing remain with us, your people, and especially with our Board of Supervisors, to give them new life and strength of spirit, so that the common good will be enhanced by their deliberations, and our county will be assigned to many others as to what is possible. Amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sister. Thank you, Supervisor Haas. Next item is our public comment period. Anybody wishes to speak? We ask you to come forward and give your name. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to speak. Comments should be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board. Pursuant to the Brown Act, action or Board discussion cannot be taken on open-time matters other than to receive the comments, and if deemed necessary, to refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up and/or to schedule the matter on a subsequent Board agenda. I have one requested this time, Dolores Lucero.
Good morning. I know I've been coming to the meetings here for a couple of weeks, and the reason I'm coming to you is because I have to follow the procedures regarding the steps before I file a complaint with the Attorney General regarding what's been going on with a couple of people who've been breaking the laws. And my last step will be here, so I hope you'll allow me to finish here. I know I came to you in the last meeting regarding one of your employees, who actually, his name is Tim Pappas. Back in November, when, before the recall, I actually went to the DA regarding a complaint regarding Ron Lindsay, the conflict of interest, the 1090s. I sat down with him, and I explained to him how he was breaking the law. And he said, since Tim Pappas at that time was helping me for me to allow Tim to bring in those documents, I said, "Okay." So I gave him, I gave Tim Pappas the documents, which I have the originals here. That's why I gave you copies, and they were highlighted pink. If you go on to their website, they created Tim Pappas, Sherlyn Pappas, Joe, Jane Martinez, Valerie, and his wife. I do believe it's a conflict, because his wife is going out there trying to get involved. Then he go ahead, then he sends a letter out saying that this is what they found. But actually, I did the work. I did the whole research. It took me 18 months, and these people took my credit. They took all my work to claiming that Mr. Randy Faulkner discovered this. He did not do that. I did. So what I'm trying to say to you, these people took these documents when Tim should have walked them into the DA. They withheld the evidence to take to the DA. And now, look at what I'm facing. They're coming after me, and if these documents would have been taken to the DA, they would have taken action to file criminal charges against Ron Lindsay. I wouldn't be in this situation. So I just thought I'd let you know that's where I'm at, and I appreciate it if you look into that, because I have the originals here and regarding the research I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. That's the only speaker request I have at this time. Is anybody else? Then we'll move on to R1. R1 is the recognition of the Shasta County Employee of the Month for August. Now therefore be resolved that Linda Kurtek, Tax Specialist III, Treasure Tax Collector, is hereby named Shasta County Employee of the Month for July 2012. Okay, let me just double-check her. It says July on one side and August on the other, so is this supposed to be August? Great, thank you. For the month of August 2012. There we go. And be it further resolved that Linda is an exemplary employee who exudes professionalism and innovation. She is extremely self-motivated, positive, and dedicated to excellence in all that she does. Linda is known for unwavering support for the Shasta County taxpayers, as well as her commitment to being a Department expert. Linda represents her Department well as she works diligently implementing new processes, procedures, and automated systems for the county. Linda is a model Shasta County employee of 29 years, and is well-deserving this recognition as our August Employee of the Month.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Lori?
Well, I'm Lori Scott. I'm Linda's Supervisor, Department Head. Linda came to work for us in March of 1979 as a temporary extra help for two months on a special project. In 1983 through 1988, she was a temporary extra help as a tax collector, account clerk, coming in and help processing tax payments. October 23rd, 1988, we had the fortunate ability to hire her as a permanent employee, and she will be working for us for 24 years this October. October 1st of 2006, we were able to promote Linda to Property Tax Specialist III. Linda shows a real willingness to take on any new thing without fear. With any new item, she will learn the technology and the process, and quickly become the go-to expert. She quite often is the first to post any issues that she might find to the statewide vendor forum, and helps come up with workarounds or solutions. When she goes to vendor meetings, she can explain a problem very well. We are sure that the vendor programs appreciate her ability to describe the problems accurately. When you hand her a process, you can be assured that it will be done quickly and accurately. It becomes her own. She keeps track of the annual processes. She keeps up with the current laws affecting her job. She is really good with people on the phone, answering their questions calmly, gently. Linda cares about taxpayers. She goes beyond to solve the issues fairly and reasonably. She is patient, honest, and compassionate. She is level-headed and extremely dependable. Linda is a pleasure to work with, and the county is very, very lucky to have Linda as an employee. Thank you.
Congratulations, Linda.
Thank you.
There we go. Linda, we're always very pleased to be able to honor our employees and to recognize them for the hard work they do. I think what catches my attention the most in reading through the resolution and stuff is, not only are you concerned about taking care of county business and doing the things you need to do in your office and stuff, but you take the other half of the equation, that you're staying up for the taxpayers, while representing the people that we serve every day, and taking their side as well, making sure that you're trying to be fair and take care of the situation for both sides. That's a truly high-quality trait to have, and we really are pleased to have employees like you who can do that. So it's my pleasure to recognize you with this plaque as the Employee of the Month for Shasta County. We also have a rosewood pen gift set with Shasta County engraved on the pen and the emblem on the gift box. There's a DVD of this award presentation, courtesy of Shasta County. There's a $25 gift certificate donated by the Mid-Management Bargaining Unit to Market Street Steakhouse, a $25 gift certificate donated by the Department Head Forum to Outback Restaurant, and a $40 gift certificate to Applebee's donated by the Deputy Sheriff's Association. And we want to thank those different units for promoting and providing these certificates to you. So an opportunity for you to say a few words, and to introduce anybody if you'd like to do that, and then we'll take some pictures.
I just want to thank my staff and the people I work with. They're wonderful to work with. And my family, my family's here. They're all...
Tell us who they are.
Cindy.
Make them stand up. Let them be embarrassed.
I have my mom here. She's Dolores Kruger. And my granddaughter Addison, and my daughter Misty, and my son-in-law Marty. Again, this is a very nice honor, and I'm not used to public speaking here, but thank you so much.
Thank you. And you want to have some of your family come down there? The next item, R2, is a proclamation. Supervisor Bod, do you want to present this proclamation?
I would love to. Thank you, Chairman Modi. I appreciate it. The saying, "We are what we eat," or "drink," I'll add that on here, takes on special meaning. For me, at the age of 37 years, both my father and my mother died, leaving me as a one-year-old without a parent. Both died from unhealthy lifestyles. In particular, my mother was extremely obese, and at that time, the technology did not exist to operate on her orthoscopically, and so she died in our local hospital. I've fought obesity as part of the 65% listed on this resolution my entire life. I do want to say, though, that this resolution is not an attempt to mandate or legislate anyone's behavior. That's not the goal here, but rather to educate, to do that through public awareness and through personal awareness. I want to thank the Anderson Partnership for Healthy Children for their continued efforts, and I would point out especially to bring healthy choices, receiving national recognition through their Healthy Choice Alternatives fashioned through Walmart, both locally and some stores nationally that pick them up. Also, I thank Mr. Ross for his editorial today that brought, I would say elevated this to a higher standard. So this is the resolution from the Shasta County Board of Supervisors, a proclamation, rather. Think Before You Drink Sugary Beverages Month, September 2012. Whereas sugary drinks are the largest contributor of added sugar in the American diet, and whereas for each additional soda a child consumes a day, the risk of obesity jumps by 60%, and whereas obesity is driving a marked increase in chronic diseases such as type 2 diabetes, heart disease, and some cancers, and whereas drinking sugary drinks nearly doubles the risk of dental cavities in children, and whereas the consequences of overweight and obesity are being strongly felt in Shasta County, where 29% of 7th and 9th graders and 65% of adults are now classified as overweight or obese, and whereas Shasta County is recognized for having some of the finest drinking water in the nation and a coveted natural aquifer that attracts water companies from around the world. We do have good water, don't we? Whereas effectively addressing the risk factors of consuming sugary beverages in our community requires partnerships among families, organizations, and the community at large, and whereas public awareness assists in protecting the health and well-being of citizens of all ages, now therefore be it resolved that the Shasta County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims September 2012 as Think Before You Drink Sugary Beverages Month in Shasta County, and urges all of its citizens to enjoy our fine, local water. Signed, my Chair Leonard Modi, August 14, 2012. And I'll move. Approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. I do have some discussion. I'll go first. I will not be supporting this proclamation, and it's not that I don't agree with the message. I do. I think it's a very important message, and I just feel that it's something that if a private group, or citizens, or businesses wanted to promote, I would, you know, I'm supportive of that. But for me, it's a little too much of kind of the big brother government telling you what to eat, what not to eat. I just can't go quite that far. If it was a little more generic, talk more maybe about diet or healthy lifestyle, I'd be more supportive of that. But I just have a problem with being too specific about tell people how to live their lives, quite frankly, and I think we need to be accountable to ourselves a little bit. So that's my reason for not supporting it. Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you, Chairman Modi. Just kind of follow up on your comments as well. I believe we, as a Board, have supported other issues throughout the year, promoting a healthy lifestyle and healthy choices. I just think this goes too far, and I'm not supportive of it. I understand the concerns and the issues, and I believe in educating my own family about these issues, but I don't think it's our place as a Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Keough?
Thank you, Chairman Modi. I much prefer to look at this in a positive and constructive vein. This is an aspect of public awareness. It is certainly consistent with what we're trying to accomplish. One of the elements we're trying to accomplish in our public health programs. It's compatible with what we're doing in healthy Shasta. It is but a mechanism for public awareness, and that's why I'm supporting this.
Supervisor Haas?
Yes, I will also support too, because I think that the message needs to get out there. A little bit of this is probably okay, but there's a lot of people that drink a lot of it, and that's a lot of sugar. And this diabetes thing right here, you know, we have a high rate in this county, and I just like to promote things that look at healthy solutions, so I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Haas. I think with that, I'll just call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? No. Motion carries. Is there someone you want to present this to? Yes, would Christine, are you, or who's going to receive? Would you like to come and share a few words, and I'll bring the proclamation to you?
I am Carol Barber from Anderson Partnership for Healthy Children.
Welcome, Carol.
And we have a couple of our youth that would actually like to say thank you for the proclamation.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Smith. I would like to thank you for the proclamation. I am very proud to be a part of this Think Before You Drink project. I was astounded to discover how much sugary sugar and calories we consume and the diseases and excess weight gain sugary drinks cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I thank you for the proclamation. I am happy to be a part of this project and discover how many diseases and sugars are in soda hit me. I used to drink soda, but after learning what's in soda made me stop. So hopefully, we can get this message out to the community and give people the message to make them drink more healthy.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add to that? Or you have more?
Hi, my name is Nicholas Niles, and thank you for your proclamation. I have learned that a lot of popular drinks are very unhealthy, and ever since I learned this, I have changed the way I choose my beverages. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas.
And we have more in here, and it was important for her to be able to share the pledge that they signed. And if anybody else wants to take the pledge, she would like to share it with a clerk to pass around.
That'd be great, if you just would hand it to the clerk. Thank you.
Oh, very good. It's a privilege to see you becoming active in your community, and at school, and in the organization through the Anderson Partnership for Healthy Children. I appreciate your efforts to bring awareness, and that's what this is about. Supervisor Keough, you stated it very well. The healthy choices we make, those are personal, aren't they? And this is nothing more than the opportunity to encourage individuals to make those choices, not to cause them to have to, but to make that choice on their own. I thank you for bringing awareness to it. I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, our thanks to you. All right, and here you go. Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our young individuals who came in to talk today. It's not always easy to do that, but thank you for taking the time to come before us and share your thoughts and comments. Please know that what you saw today was just government in action, and as we talked about, I think Supervisor Hartman and I both certainly agree with the message that's being promoted, so we support you and applaud you for your efforts to do that. So thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thanks.
Supervisor Hartman, again, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, young people, for coming today as well, and I think you have a lot of courage to stand up and make these choices, and peer pressure is such a big, important part of our community and the young people. So thank you for making that stand to your peers.
Our next item is our consent calendar. The following consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They may be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested person may request an item to be removed from consent calendar for discussion and consideration. At this time, we have a request to pull Item C11 from the consent calendar. Is there any others?
I would approve of the second.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Motion carries. Item C11.
Good morning, Chairman Modi, members of the Board, Pat Minter, Public Works Director. Before you today is a proposal to purchase Steve's Wrecking for road purposes. I could have the overhead coming up. Steve's Wrecking is on Old Oregon Trail, just south of Viking Way, near the Field of Dreams and Sports Complex. It's right on Old Oregon Trail. Here's a photograph of the facility. It's about less than an acre, wedge-shaped parcel. As you can see, it's right along the roadway. But to provide some background on the overall circulation, this is from the general plan. The broad red lines are proposed to be four-lane arterials. And you can see that Old Oregon Trail is a major north-south arterial on the east side. So currently, we have a widening project that's about to go out to bid. Poles are being relocated. We acquired 49 parcels of right-of-way, and that comes down roughly in this area here, and also comes into Reading on Old Alturas. So that leaves a gap here from Viking Way down to Old 44, and there are a few bottlenecks in there. It's a difficult stretch for such an important circulation element. It's a real shame that we barely have two lanes. There's no place for pedestrians, no place for bicyclists, no shoulder. And so there was a proposal as part of the Shastak Redevelopment Zone, which stretched along this corridor. We had $1 million budgeted in here for improvements, and we considered also adding it on to our existing project here. The Shastak redevelopment money went away, but we did have agreement with the City of Reading. We were going to purchase Steve's Wrecking, and they were going to take half of it for the Field of Dreams site, and we were going to take half of it for road purposes. Redevelopment's gone away, but it's still a very good project, long-term, for circulation, particularly for that missing gap. And this aerial photo here provides a better understanding why. So here is Viking Way, and here is Old Oregon Trail. Here are two houses, which are very close to the right-of-way. You can see they're less than the width of the road. This one right here is probably 15 feet from the traveled way to the roof, maybe a little more, but not much. On the opposite side, we've got some open ground, except for Steve's Wrecking here. Steve's Wrecking is really on too small a parcel for that use. A wrecking yard needs some space, and there are a number of wrecking yards in the area, but they're all much larger. They're subject to water quality requirements, but they need to have storage space and room to operate, and they also need marketing. And he's made do. He has made do with this space. As we propose to widen, there's also an issue of utilities. There's a major power line that runs down that road. So that has to be relocated, and PG&E, the owner of that line, wants free space around their lines to be able to maintain. So when the City of Reading came in and put in a left-turn pocket here, they had to acquire some right-of-way, and that was all through eminent domain, because neither these property owners nor Steve's Wrecking can afford to give up anything. If we were to acquire only a portion along the frontage of Steve's Wrecking, the damages to his business would be so great, we would almost do better to buy him out, it seems. When we look at the ultimate width per the general plan, it's 84 feet wide right-of-way. So that takes you back to about here in his business. So you could see that would leave him with this little wedge here. I wonder how he even manages to get vehicles back here into these such tight little spaces. But he's doing it, and he's done a good job. He's complied with all the water quality requirements. He's got a monitoring program. And when we considered acquiring it with the city, we went in with Lawrenson Associates. We did a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 study, and lo and behold, it came up clean. No metals in the soils above hazardous waste limits. Borings didn't reveal any petroleum problems. Really amazing. I think it's such a small site that there's just never been the luxury of anything but good housekeeping on that site. We even tested his septic tank to see whether anything might have been going in there down his drain and into his leach field, and even that came up clean. We really don't have any problems on the site from an environmental standpoint. So staff recommends that we acquire the property, and right now, with the fall We're about to go out to bid with a project that ends right here. This is an important gap here. It's a good idea to acquire it with county funds because the federal funds bring with them federal oversight, things like historical preservation. You can believe it, this would require an assessment by the State Office of Historical Preservation and possibly some sort of preservation. It's clearly over 30 years old and, but I think there's a higher and best use for the land. And also, this shows the utilities overhead and just his main access is right here off the road. So for us to put any sort of a bike lane, also, we would have to shift the road over because the homes on the other side, we don't own any right-of-way along the frontage. So I know it seems like an extreme step to purchase this business, but we have a willing seller now. He's willing to sell it for the appraised value. There's been no dickering in the course of the negotiations. He respected the process and we respected his rights as a property owner. We had some discussion about his inventory and the proposal is that we would acquire his inventory and surplus it off through auction during the escrow process. So by the time we close escrow on this site, the entire site will be vacant and we'll be ready to demo the site and we'll be ready for road purposes. And potentially, the land could be used at the back for Big League Dreams or other uses such as that. And it gets rid of an eyesore at the entrance to the Sports Complex. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Supervisor Haas.
Well, I just wondered, do you have any idea what that inventory might bring?
Yes, it will, I'm guessing somewhere in the order of $150,000, $200,000. It has an appraised value, it's in the estimate, but about half of what we're buying is the inventory. And we anticipate, he's got a lot of working engines that are ready for sale. He's in the business and he's acquired a considerable inventory and so we've made arrangements and we plan to be rid of that before we're done with escrow. And that'll help defray the cost.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. You kind of covered them a little bit, but, so the idea was, basically, we're buying the property and the business lock, stock, and barrel. We're just taking, we're buying the whole thing as from a willing buyer and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so then the plan is to, as you said, auction or sell off the inventory, which is obviously just the parts. I take it Steve is not planning on reopening the business somewhere and taking, is he getting out of the business? He doesn't want to take the inventory with him or?
Actually, the gentleman's name is Mr. Marvin Barton. Steve's has been in the business for 50 years. But my understanding is that, yeah, he's ready to get out of the business and he's happy to wind down his business. He is in the audience today if you had any specific questions, but my understanding is he's out to wind down the business.
And so would we, I mean, how would we go about doing, selling of the property? And you said before the close of escrow, we'd have this done?
Yeah, once we go into escrow, we would sell it off the existing, through our normal auction process. We get rid of equipment all the time down at the courtyard and so forth. So we're prepared to do so. We'll work with purchasing and we'll hold an auction and we'll get rid of this stuff. We do this all the time with our courtyard materials.
Supervisor Kehoe.
Thank you Chairman Modi. A few questions also, primarily of clarification. Looking at the staff report under discussion, the last line in the second paragraph, you say, "Residents across the street are equally close. Those owners have opposed past widening proposals." Now, with the possible purchase of this property, I take it, Mr. Minter, that they're no longer opposed?
Actually, they're very pleased with Mr. Barton coming forward and offering. My understanding is that they've expressed appreciation to him, that the road will not be widened in their direction if this were to go forward. And you can see that there's really no room there to widen in that direction. My understanding is their concern is not a wider road, but rather the traffic moving closer. If we acquire this property, we will widen entirely on this side, so the traffic, what is now the northbound through lane, will become the bicycle and pedestrian lane. And so the traveled way will shift away from them indirectly.
The third paragraph under discussion makes mention that Mr. Barton has been very cooperative and that Lawrence and Associates have completed an environmental site assessment of the property and you spoke briefly to that. And then I noticed under Clause 4 contingency on Page 3 of 12, Section 4.1.1, you're leaving the option open for the county to do an assessment of the property. So my question of you is, embodied in the contract, is there a indemnification clause that the seller is willing to give us to protect us from any hazards or environmental problems with the property? And perhaps that question is best directed to Mr. Cruz.
I would say, well, Mr. Cruz is doing his homework. The county ordered the study by Lawrence and Associates, so we've already done our one round. And by doing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, we somewhat protect ourselves through the law from potential environmental liabilities. We do due diligence before we purchase. We didn't just run out there and buy something and then claim ignorance. So I believe that affords us a measure of protection as well. The conditions in the contract, I think, were intended to cover any potential issues that may have arisen since the study or something that might come up. But there is always some risk when we acquire property.
That's right. And as the buyer, I'm interested in the county being pretty much risk-free on a transaction like this. So my question is, is there an indemnification clause in the body of the contract that protects the county?
There is an indemnification clause in the contract. I would like to ask the Assistant County Council, Jim Ross, to comment on this. I know he's had more familiarity with the terms of the contract and has reviewed it in particular.
Good morning Supervisor Kehoe, members of the Board, Jim Ross, Assistant County Council. There's various warranties within the contract regarding the environmental condition of the property. My understanding is Public Works has done an assessment of the property and as you correctly noted, we specifically put in there an opportunity to conduct further investigation if we need to. At that point, if our investigation has concluded that there is no environmental damage or issues to be concerned about and there's no breach of the warranties, then a certain amount of risk does pass on to the county. However, we've tried to design the contract in such way that we had every opportunity to satisfy ourselves that the conditions were acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. This is a subject that is a vital concern to me in that I was a member of the Reading City Council when we purchased the property for the intermodal facility. And it turned out that there was substantial cost to the city because we didn't, and this is more of an editorial comment, we didn't protect ourselves perhaps the way we should have. And so I would not want to see that replicated in this transaction.
I understand Supervisor Kehoe and that's why we specifically put in the provisions that gave us additional opportunity to do assessment if we felt it was needed and to cancel the contract if any concerns arose.
Thank you. I have some other questions, but let me yield the floor to my colleagues.
Thank you Supervisor Kehoe. Supervisor Hartman.
I would actually like Supervisor Kehoe to go ahead and finish.
Well, then I'll give Supervisor Ball the opportunity.
I would, if you want to continue.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
My questions may actually be your questions, who knows? You mentioned originally a partnership between the City of Reading and Shasta County in the purchase of the property. Our report says it's going to be, as you mentioned, from the road fund. Is there any chance of getting any finances from the City of Reading?
Actually, there are two potential prospects. One is that the Shastak Redevelopment Zone still has a balance, I understand, of $4 million and that money can only go to redevelopment projects. And so while that has not been resolved and would be a matter of negotiation with the city, it's possible that we might yet be able to backfill the road fund money with some of the redevelopment money. Secondly, once this property is acquired, it will be acquired in the name of the County of Shasta. If the city were to approach us at any time in the future, we would be in a position to perhaps sell it at a square foot rate or whatever. So it will be a county asset and the city may well have some interest because the Sports Complex is a going concern.
Thank you, Mr. Minter. Supervisor Haas.
Well, I just think, doesn't this property slope toward the Big League Dreams now?
Yes, there's a drainage ditch that comes through somewhere here, I believe. But I believe the general lay of the land is in that direction.
It's fairly shallow soil, so if there was any problem, it probably would have been detected a long time ago when Big League Dreams was built, I would imagine.
That's a good point. I would also say that the Lawrence study was quite comprehensive for such a small site. It's a very small site for such an elaborate undertaking. So Lawrence was able to walk basically the entire site. It is bare, there's no vegetation obstructing anything. You can see everything that's there. So it's a fairly thorough, and it was a subsurface investigation with boreings and tests for metals and hydrocarbons. It's a thorough evaluation.
You don't have to bore very deep there before you get into pretty impermeable soil, so it would have been trapped in there fairly close to the surface, I would think.
Yeah, there's no real potential for a deep plume.
Supervisor Kehoe.
Thank you Chairman Modi. Let's talk briefly, Mr. Minter, about the appraisal. Did the county order up the appraisal?
Yes.
And the appraisal, what were the instructions to the appraiser?
It was Shaw and Associates that prepared the appraisal and it was our standard direction to appraise the property as a complete business for complete acquisition, including the inventory.
Okay, so there are three elements to this transaction. And so the property, and please correct me if I'm not interpreting this correctly, the property is appraised at $300,000?
Yes.
And then the inventory, personal property, and business was appraised, or not to exceed $325,000. What was the appraisal on the second element?
That was about five years ago and it was considerably less. He had a smaller inventory at that time. So, pardon? I missed it. And what was their value at that time?
See what you've done now. Is it, see what you've done now? I know, I know. His inventory was too big. I'm pretty sure his value had a 250,000. Okay, so, pardon me.
In 2011, the appraised value of the inventory was 200, and the business was $250,000.
$250,000?
It's since changed because naturally, every day, a businessman is purchasing and selling items and so his inventory has fluctuated. But we've adjusted it on an item-by-item basis. But in 2011, it was, June 2011, it was $250,000.
And then the $2,860 in lieu of relocation, that's a mandatory fee? Is that correct?
Yes, and it's based upon the earnings of the business and he's, Mr. Barton has given us his tax returns and we've backed in to figure out what the appropriate value is there.
So the current appraisal then on the inventory and the business is $250,000, is that what you said?
Yes. Well, that was as of June 2011.
So it's increased from, it's increased $75,000 in your estimation?
Yes, and he was able to document the acquisition of specific parts over that course of time. Because we don't have a deal with him and he's in the business and he's conducting business as a businessman would.
The bit of a difficulty I have on us purchasing the inventory is then we in turn have to become involved in this business and liquidate the inventory. And that's going to cost us money to liquidate the inventory. And Mr. Lees has an expression, which I believe it to be valuable, and it says, "How will this play out on the front page of the newspaper? If we spend $325,000 for the inventory and when we go to liquidate the inventory, we only get $100,000, that doesn't seem to me to be a good business decision." And I think most taxpayers wouldn't think it was a good business decision. I suppose if you focus entirely on improving the road system, you could probably justify that gap. And of course, this is a matter of conjecture on what we'll get for that inventory.
Yes, sir.
We may get $500,000.
Yes, sir.
But then I suppose the owner would sell it if it was going to be $500,000.
Supervisor Hartman.
Thank you. I feel that this entire Old Oregon Trail, Alturas Road improvement projects that have been in the works for so many years are critical. The widening, the safety issues, the bike trail, we really need it. And when I look at the front page of the newspaper issue, I would much rather see it be an agreeable benefit to all parties rather than an eminent domain. I think this is a win-win. This project needs to move forward. We've seen delays in the other segments of this project because of property acquisition issues and I think this is important enough that we need to move forward and I would make that motion.
I'll second. Been moved in second. Further discussion, and I have a couple who want to speak, but I want to ask one question first to kind of follow along Supervisor Kehoe's comments. The report says for the personal property, inventory, and business, not to exceed $325,000. So what does it mean not to exceed? I mean, are you?
We have an inventory. We can tell you exactly how many Ford eight-cylinder engines are in his possession on that parcel. And so as a businessman, until he has a deal with us, he's continued to operate his business. And so he may have sold something yesterday, but we are confident, we have told him that we need to maintain it within that bubble right there and we'll wind it down.
So Richard, I was, maybe Mr. Ross is going to shed some light on this, I don't know, but I guess what I'm asking then is if, what we're saying is the max we're willing to pay is $325,000, so if next week when we close the deal, it's $350,000, he's out of luck, it's $325,000. But if we close the deal and it's $275,000, is it $275,000?
It's $275,000, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Haas.
Well, I think it's wonderful that we have neighbors across the road that are in favor. And if we were to lose one person here and, you know, how lawsuits go, this could cost a lot more money. So I think it's time passed due that we get this fixed. It's not very far from Columbia School. There's a lot of traffic here and Viking Way's been improved, a lot more traffic down in there. Of course, the big city, all their facilities are down there, so this road does get a lot of use and I'm fully in favor of getting this thing completed.
Supervisor Ball.
Thank you Chairman Modi. I believe that Supervisor Hartman has zeroed in very correctly on what we're dealing with here. If we were looking at this as an eminent domain on those houses, the vote simply would be no. If we were looking, I'm talking about my own vote here, if we were talking about an eminent domain procedure to take that business, the vote would be no for me. But here, we have a willing seller. We have due diligence on the part of a creative department and legal backing them. We have, we don't have a 100% guarantee, as you pointed out, but we have all of the things that should have been considered and looked at. They have been looked at and well researched. I think this is, as Supervisor Hartman said, a win-win, fully in support. This is not just a county issue, this is a good neighbor issue for the entire county and city, in fact, all of those who use that road and traverse it.
Supervisor Kehoe.
Thank you Chairman Modi. I think all of us are of one mind that this is an efficacious project. To me, the transaction is overly complicated. Why don't we buy the property, allow the business owner to liquidate it, and then we've consummated the agreement?
Mr. Barton, did you want to speak? You raised, please come up, and if you'd just give us your name and...
Hey, I am Mr. Barton, I've owned the property since when it was a dirt road out there, okay? All those parcels that are there, I can tell you, I hunted jackrabbits on all those parcels there. There was no other buildings except my building, which was my dad's, basically, and one parcel across the street. And you can grill me as much as you want on any part of this, and I'll, believe me, I'll be very honest with you. We started this, the auto dismantling, my dad and I, in 1963. Yes, I was only 15 years old, but it's been in the business since the entire time. There was never an environmental issue, there was never permits, so to speak, until 1996, when the state started their environmental impact report surveys. And we were, I was one of the first companies up here that joined on that. We were actually, it happened just down the road from where I'm at. But every day, every week, every month, every year, during stormwater activity, I'm going to address on your concerns for that, I have to fill out a stack of paperwork to monitor that rain runoff. And if there is, there's wattles in place, straw, there's everything that, you know, that's done specifically by the law to control any kind of a runoff. Well, for one thing, I don't, I never dismantled, we never dismantled during any storm activities, so we didn't have that problem. I can tell you other places that didn't, but, and I know specifically to, one of the things that you were addressing on a parcel that you, you, the city or the county bought, they had...
Well, clarify, it was the city. Just want to clarify, it was the city.
Yeah, right. Well, that, I knew the guy very well, too. But those were underground tanks and such. I have, I've never had any underground tanks. Everything's been surfaced, so everything is stored above ground. All the wasted oil and such has been in, in containers that are labeled, that are picked up quarterly by my disposal people. But as far as there being an environmental issue, I, like they were saying, they come out, they drilled holes all over the ground, they went down six or eight feet, and I knew they were going to find nothing, and, and they didn't. They did a pretty extensive job, really, for such a small area, because if you're kind of associated with this kind of an activity, you know, when there's not any regulation on it like it was in the past, it's pretty obvious, especially if you're, if you have a video aerial like this, you'll see oil problems someplace. I mean, honestly, Kmart has a lot more oil problems than I've got. Yeah, that's just the way it is. But you're not going to find an environmental issue here at all. And as far as addressing the part about the inventory, if I'm, if I may, it's not like selling hot dogs and hamburgers. Yeah, you, you open up a pot, a package of hot dogs on a hot dog stand, you're going to sell all your hot dogs, basically, and then you're going to not, you know, at a certain time, you're not going to open up another package because they're going to spoil on you or whatever. Wrecking yards, you might have, I have parts in there that I've had for like 35 years. You have to buy that stuff, and then you have to hold it until you have a buyer. And that, like I said, that may take a long period of time. That's why when we buy a particular vehicle, and hypothetic, I'm going to say we, we give like $1,000 for a car. In return, we'll get $4,000 or $5,000, but it may not be for 30 years, so we have to hang on to that. That's why my inventory goes up like that. And a good businessman will have, it's the old saying, my old saying is, you can't sell it if you ain't got it. So it's one of those kind of deals.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Any questions to Mr. Barton?
Mr. Barton, I appreciate your candidness, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Good? All right, thank you, guys. Now, and to address the part about the, oh, I'm sorry. To address the part about the neighbors, I know all my neighbors for like a mile around there. And, and yes, I can go back, if you want to know some specifics about how they were going to widen the road on the other side, it turned out to be a real nasty deal, so that's why I just basically said, you know what? For all my neighbors, I'll just, you can just take it from me. I'll just bow out, and everybody else will be fine, so.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Any other discussion? Well, I'll just add my final comments, just I agree with many of the comments made by my fellow supervisors, certainly the concerns you have, Supervisor Keel, but I also agree that it's, I think it's in the best interest of the community overall that we're going to make a roadway that's heavily traveled, safer, particularly as Supervisor Haas mentioned, you have a school down the street. I am very appreciative of the fact that, Mr. Barton, that we have someone who's a willing participant in this thing, and many times it's not. And as Mr. Minter has said, this thing has gone along very smoothly, which says a lot about you, and we appreciate your candor and comments today, so thank you. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Motion carries for one. Thank you, Mr. Minter.
Thank you.
Moving on to the regular calendar, item R3, administrative office update and supervisors' reports. Mr. Lees.
I have two reports.
Okay. Supervisor Haas, would you like to go first?
Sure. It's, it's a little of a pick-on day for the Forest Service. I think we can all sit here and look out and see the smoke, and it's unfortunate that this reading fire got to the point where it is, and, and it's really unfortunate that we have a Forest Service that'll go after a private landowner that starts one. What are they going to do with themselves on this? This started up in the park, was less than an acre, three or four men could have gone in and walked around it and put a line around it, and now it's destroyed, I don't know how many thousands and thousands of acres of good, some of it very young timber that was planted on Badger Mountain back in the late 70s, early 80s, and they were planning on doing a harvest there in, in 2015, so look where we are now. I just hope that they can get their, their stuff together and get some of this dead timber harvested after the fire's over, so that it won't be a total loss. But I do want them to come and give us a report, maybe next week, we'll have to give them a call and see if they can come and give us a report, or maybe wait till they get it under control, and just tell us how many bored feet that this fire killed as a result of what I call poor management.
Would you be requesting the US Forest Service or the National Park Service?
Both.
The National, okay.
Both of them. It started in the Park Service, and they both need to be accountable. I mean, it's, the cost of this thing is probably over $10 million today, and we've got a government that's spending money right and left and printing money to, to pay their bills, and they're, and they're doing it on things like this that should not have happened. So it bothers me, and I know it bothers all of us on this board...
It does.
...because we continually argue with them and fight with them about the condition of the forest and how poorly it's managed, how thick it is, and when a fire like this gets going, there's hardly any way to stop it. What is it, 15% contained? That's nothing. They brag about that, you know, that's, that's nothing, so I want to hear from them. And the rest of you can chime in on this if you'd like.
Well, I'll just segue on that. I thank you for bringing it up, and especially would like to hear whether or not they are going to allow salvage logging, because so often we see tremendous waste just sitting there, lying on the ground and rotting and bringing in more infestation. So I would like to have them answer that up front, put the pressure on them. Thank you Supervisor Haas.
Well, and Pam Giacometti's in the back, too, going to take over for me next year, and I'm sure this is close to where she lives. I'm sure that they're all very concerned up there with, with the results of this. I mean, it, it's, it's hurt tourism, it's hurt everything that, that they depend on up there, so I'll tell you, it's, it's not pleasant when it could have been taken care of.
Supervisor Keel.
The policy of letting things burn when it's this hot in the middle of the summer, that's a wreck waiting to happen, and it did.
Supervisor Keel.
Thank you. Chairman Modi, the reality, as we all know Supervisor Haas, is we're, we're talking about a longstanding land management policy and philosophy of the National Park Service, which in essence says if you've got a, a fire caused by nature, you let it burn under a, a set of guidelines, and regrettably, as happened in Yellowstone years ago, these things seem to gravitate into major expense items. So I, I think you're on the right track, but it is a national policy for the parks...
Well, having been to Yellowstone in the latter part of June and early July, I see the results that they had there, and it, it hurt that park a lot, you know, to go and look and see what the results were there, so I don't know, I think maybe they need to relook at, at their, their, their policy.
Well, I think the most interesting point you actually bring up is the fact that just recently here they tried to hold private landowners responsible for the cost of fires, whether they started them or not, and now here's a fire on federal land, and are they going to hold themselves responsible, as you said, and pay the fine or the fee that they're trying to charge a private landowner, so.
But that costs us all.
Yeah.
Government pays it, costs us all, everyone.
Well, I think it just goes back to the poor decision in the first place to try to hold someone accountable for something that's not, that's not they didn't cause, but just because it's on their property.
Well, see, I could see this in the fall, you know, when it's cooling down, but right in the middle of the summer, and when we, they, they knew, I think they knew that there was hotter weather coming, so it just doesn't make sense.
Supervisor Hartman, your turn.
Thank you. I'll, I'll comment on something positive. On, gosh, I think it was August 3rd, I was very pleased to represent the board at the unveiling of the Shasta Lake Cavern's National Natural Landmark Designation plaque. And it's, it's such an honor for us to have such a great landmark in our community, and, and not only are they a great business, but they have such an influence on the young children in our community for all the tours that they give and the education. So it was really an honor to be able to be at that and to have that designation in our county, so congratulations to them.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Supervisor Ball.
Thank you, Chairman Modi. I just want to congratulate the Shingle Town Volunteer Fire Department for their fun day. I participated as co-EMC with Sheriff Posenko, thank you to Sheriff Posenko as well. They use this event annually to raise money for the department, and that's the bulk of their financing for the year. Our volunteer departments need all of the help and encouragement they can receive from the board, so we send a, congratulations out to them. Just, the board is aware that I'm leaving for the rural counties meeting. Of course, high on the agenda is the SRA tax that we continue to fight. We'll bring the information back from the meeting next week. If there's anything else the board members would like to have me bring to the attention of RCRC, I'd be happy to do that for you.
Well, pound on them about these fires, because it's, it's a serious, it's...
You got it.
...across the western United States, there's millions of acres burning right now. It's going to affect our food prices, I mean, who knows where it's going to end up, but it's, it's not good.
Supervisor Keel.
Thank you, Chairman Modi. I'm pleased this morning to introduce Mr. Michael Oliver of the Boy Scouts of America. Mr. Oliver is with us this morning, working on a requirement for his citizenship in the community merit badge. Mr. Oliver, would you care to stand up? You don't need to say anything, but we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate you bringing your mother Molly with you this morning. So thank you both very much.
Anything further?
That's it.
And I'll just report that last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to participate in Union Pacific's Railway Safety Program. It was an opportunity, Super, CEO Lees attended along with me, as well as members of the Redding and Anderson City Councils. Just an opportunity to really, just to ride on their, their train from Redding to Anderson and back, but to be in, actually, I spent some time in the locomotive and being told about what they're working on and things they're trying to do to provide safety on our rails. And it was amazing to me, the amount of things that people do that they don't recognize are so dangerous. We, as we were traveling back from Anderson to Redding, we were coming into South Redding, and probably a high school student backpack and stuff was coming, was probably going to cross, he's crossed 273, he's probably going to go over to East Side Road, and he just walked up this side of the hill where the train, and we're coming down, they're doing 35 miles an hour, and they say it 35 miles an hour, it takes him about a mile to stop. So that's probably like here to, like the Diesel Horse Bridge or something like that. And his back is sort of to us, and he's just oblivious to this train, and walks up, and you could tell the engineers are just like, you could feel the tension building, and they're like, trying to like yell at this guy a little bit and stuff, even there. And he just walks right up to probably within about three feet of the railway, and we're probably maybe still about 50 yards away, and you just know he's going to step up on the track and get run over. And at the last second, it's like, he either hears or feels a vibration or something, turns and looks, sees the train, kind of turns and just kind of walks back down the hill. But I think they, they told us that that's one of the biggest concerns they have, is the number of people who don't recognize the danger that there is. And of course nowadays, most people, particularly joggers, but kids as well, use the earbuds when they're listening to their music, and clearly just have no idea. So it was interesting to watch them as they, as they went down the tracks, and they're looking at the signals ahead and recognizing, you know, what they mean, and they have sort of what they call, I forgot what the name they have, but basically it's, it's in this, they go to this mode of almost pure silence in the, in the locomotive, and the engineer and his backup, there's always two people there, and they both continuously call out, you know, confirming that it's the red sign, it's the green sign, it's the, this miles per hour, or whatever it is, so that they're constantly being aware and concentrating, as particularly as moving into populated areas, looking for the dangers and stuff. So it was a very interesting trip to learn that they do take safety very seriously, they are constantly trying to improve what they do to protect us, and I think we just need to remind ourselves to be more attentive to the railroad tracks and the trains, and recognize that there is a lot of danger there, and there's no way they're ever going to stop if you get too close and step out on the tracks, or drive your car across the tracks, or ride your bicycle down the tracks, or whatever it is, so. Anyway, very interesting, very informative.
Did, did they think about blowing the whistle?
Oh, they were.
They were.
But again, it's just, when you're, when the train's coming, the, the sound is behind the train, not in front of the train, and so, yeah, it's amazing that the people just are kind of oblivious to it.
Well, and then in places, vehicles try to outrun the train. Look at this truck wreck over in Nevada over a year ago, where a trucker tried to outrun the train, and it just doesn't pay.
Okay.
But hey, I'm proud of you for picking up the Anderson people, because they hadn't had that figured out, huh?
They did when we drove by them the first time. We stopped and we...
Good job.
Anyway, they got it figured out, we got them all picked up. Okay, our item R4 has been pulled by the department, will be brought back, I think, at next meeting. So we are going to go into closed session. We will recess the closed session, discuss the following items, estimated to be about 30 minutes. Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation with Reverge Anselmo on two different cases. Supervisor Haas?
Yes, on the Anselmo case, I have a conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87100, so I'll be recusing from that part of the closed session.
Thank you Supervisor Haas. Anything else? With that, we are recessed.